There we go.
Wonderful. Well, welcome everybody to the Equity Committee of the Harwood Unified Union School District School Board. Uh, we are calling this meeting to order at seven eleven on June nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Um, we have a couple of quick orders of business before we get to public comments. Uh, the first one would be according to the agenda, would we, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
A motion. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Do we have any objections to um, to approving it? Great. All right. So approved. Um, board members present, very quick roll call. Uh, I'm Life Legaros. I'm chairing this committee and I represent Duxbury.
Elizabeth Brown representing Waterbury.
Tori Terravella representing Waterbury.
Mike, you want to say hi to?
Sure. Mike Looklater, I'm the superintendent.
Wonderful. And it looks like we have um, one additional person, member of the public. Would you like to introduce yourself? Say hi.
Hi, I'm Casey, special educator at Harwood this past year.
Fantastic.
And he's on uh, K C's T far member too, just so everyone is aware.
Great.
Right.
Um, so uh, public comment, um, Casey, I, you're welcome to, if you, if you'd like to start with a comment, um, that we would, we would be all ears.
And also I shared with Casey at the invitation to come and talk a little bit about the draft agenda too. So, um, she wants to, is it okay if she postpones that? That's if she wants to as well?
Yes. Thank you. Yeah, I was gonna check on that. Um, I would love for, um, you know, the agenda actually is kind of like, do a, kind of finalize our, our thinking and then do a handoff. So if you're able to stick around Casey, you can participate then as well. Um, but if you have a, if you have anything you'd like to say to, to start off, um, you're more than welcome, but you don't need to.
Thank you. I really, I really wanted to listen and learn um, more about um, the work that you've been doing and then also share and contribute when it comes to revising the draft.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right. Well, so um, agenda wise, we're into our, our topics area and essentially we wanted to kind of finish up um, where we think we are with the current draft before handing it off to, to Mike and Casey and the rest of folks will be working on it this summer and, and into the fall a little bit. Um, so just a reminder that our general uh, trajectory is that um, here we are in our fourth meeting. We've um, done some learning together, done some thinking, and at this point we've drafted um, some language for the policy, drawing from various sources. And we also have some design principles. And the idea is um, once we're feeling good with, with our start on it, we will hand it over to a district team. Um, that's kind of starting with, with the um, task force for anti racism, um, and then expanding out. And um, they'll do some work this summer, maybe into the fall. Um, and either that team or us or some combination will get um, some input from community members and organizations as well. And then we'll um, finalize the draft in late fall and um, hopefully bring it back to the full board and get it approved. Um, by the end of the calendar year, if we can pull that off. Does that sound like a okay summary? Anything to, to add? Anybody who's, who's been in on this?
Can we just be open to accelerating it? You know, I, and again, can't wait to hear it, what, Ca- Ca- Cassie or Casey? Ca- Casey, okay. Just wanted to be clear. Um, and it'll be, it'll be very, it'll be great to get additional feedback, but I was kind of impressed by what we pulled together. I, I personally thought, so you know, if we end up getting positive feedback and it turns out we can accelerate this faster, you know, I'm assuming we would all be open to trying to bring it to the board sooner. Right?
Totally. Yeah, I just, I want to give the district folks time to, to do what they want to do with it, um, and make sure they can get the folks involved to, who they think um, should be. And you know, I know getting together people during the summer can be a little, a little tough um, with schedules. I know there's some stipends involved, which is great. Um, and there's still a couple of days here where teachers are still on the clock and on their email. So um, we're hoping that there's more recruiting to do that can be done in the next couple of days. So yeah, totally Elizabeth, if it all works out that way. Um, who knows?
And did we, did we define exactly who we are putting together for, I keep calling it like the diverse panel in terms of being able to provide that input?
I think it's still coming together. Is that right, Mike?
I met earlier today with the people, we had about five people who volunteered to be on that kind of mini group from T far. And we, we decided that July is probably not a good time to put together a focus group. There's just too many people out. So uh, what I'm gonna do, one of the people on the group is the administrative assistant at uh, the, at Brookside. And uh, Kelsey and I are gonna meet the second week of July and lay out, based on what we talked about, layout somewhat of a plan and some ideas for the different groups. And then a timeframe for putting that together. Uh, probably, we, we are hoping to be finished by maybe mid September. Um, that would give us the kind of the beginning of the year, teachers are back, third week of August, and that would give us probably about four weeks to to assemble groups, some focus groups. Uh, we have one of the, one of our teachers, Matt Henson, uh, who is at uh, Harwood. He works with a group. He has a, a group of uh, geared towards BIPOC students who uh, he suggested and has volunteered to meet with them. Uh, but the group does want to meet with some other groups as well, uh, groups that we talked about. Parents, students, uh, focusing on some different equi- areas of uh, equity. Uh, to make sure we're getting a wide representation and making sure that we're not just getting the people who uh, will respond to an announcement and, and you know, post it on Waterbury Roundabout or something, but people who, uh, that we seek out for input.
Okay, that sounds great. And w- would it be appropriate, Mike, if members of this committee, or we could even open up to the broader board, if people know folks in the community who are particularly interested and or have expertise in one of these areas to kind of point them towards um, you and Kelsey?
Absolutely. If you would uh, do that, we would love that.
I would like to try to box in exactly, you know, once we get some of this input in terms of making sure we've got representation of the various groups that we've articulated in here, making sure that there's a weighted representation around that. One thought I have is, you know, how do we kind of box that in? So I'm not trying to exclude a lot of voices, but I kind of am in a way, as in, I think we've seen this in a lot of communities where it's been literally dragged out for a couple of years where things have gotten quite heated. And I again, think that this group is on a really good job of creating a really balanced equity policy that I'm hoping will be well received by a number of people. Um, but I have some concern that if we don't articulate early on in this process, who's going to be involved, to what degree? That we're just leaving that open ended? And it may be hard to bring this to a conclusion in the time horizon that we've articulated.
Yeah, um, but I, 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 I think that we kind of have to be ready for the possibility that it'll go super smooth and move even quicker than our timeline, but we also have to be ready for the possibility that, you know, there'll be some complexities that we hit along the way and some challenges. Like, I agree with you that, you know, we don't want like a multi-year process by any means. Um, but you know, I definitely um, live by the philosophy that, you know, equity is both an outcome and a process. And so, you know, when we're thinking that, you know, equity um, should um, you know, provide empowerment to groups who were historically marginalized or currently so. Um, I think that, you know, we have to make sure that we have a process that allows those voices to be heard.
And clearly life, I'm not trying to uh, insinuate that we're trying to exclude especially the marginalized voices we're trying to care for in this policy. Clearly, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is making sure we've got weighted equal representation of all the different groups that we're clearly articulating in here. And you know, the particular groups that I had to make sure that we had a balanced representation in here. So for example, you know, making sure that we have students who have learning disabilities who are able to speak to their experiences in here. And so what I'm saying is that balanced representation, and if we're going outside into the community, you know, beyond our school walls, that we also have that balanced representation. But we're also realistic in terms of um, you know, if we have people coming in, providing input in, in terms of testimony and so on. Are we leaving that open ended? You know? Or are we going to say, you know, within a certain timeframe and limits or numbers or something, we're trying to box that in? I think what I'm hearing is we'll, we'll deal with that when it comes time.
Yeah, I think, I think deal with it when it comes time, just honestly, because we don't even know how many people we're gonna get to participate. Um, so I mean, ideally we'll have people clamoring to give opinions, but for all we know, we might be dragging five people in, you know? So I think, I think it's a, you know, let's, let's worry about it if it becomes a problem kind of thing.
That sounds fair.
Yeah, I li- I like that. Yeah, let's, let's, let's play it out. Um, I mean, in an ideal world, you know, we, we do have a good, healthy dialogue. And we have enough folks coming and, and presenting views and impacting the process and walking away feeling like they were heard. And that this is something that they can like, you know, believe in and support. Um, even if not every single line is absolutely, you know, their top priority. Um, so sometimes that can, you know, we would have to kind of be responsive. Um, that's one reason why I think uh, having the, the district folks who are um, you know, really in the work, in the weeds. Um, you know, facilitating that process, I think they're just well positioned for that. Um, for this sort of o- open and sometimes sometimes time consuming dialogue that um, it can be a little tougher to have it at the board level and, and that kind of in a formal setting like that. Um, I'll be interested to hear Casey's stuff. And, you know, Casey, you've been part of the, the T far group, which is dealing with one super important of equity with racial justice. And I'm, uh, sure looks like, from what we've seen, that you've been you've been in the weeds and that you all have been having some pretty complex conversations with people bringing different perspectives, at least from the notes that we saw around the the statement. Um, do we want to keep, do we want to keep talking process? Um, or do we want to look at the document? I, I'm, I'm fine if we want to do process stuff first. Do we want to play this out a little bit more and make sure that this that your concerns are met, Elizabeth?
No, I, I think they've been met. So I think we decided that we'll deal with, you know, the numbers and the amount of input when it comes time to do that. So I think I'm fine with that.
Okay. Um, Mike, I maybe we can keep playing out the process piece and then come back to the document. Mike, I appreciate you kind of opening and, and talking about the, the group that you met with today, which it sounds like we're, we're mostly um, if not all sort of core T far members, is that right?
Correct.
And you said five? Like, how many people are officially part of T far at this point?
Uh, Casey, do you know how many? I, I don't have the list in front of me. I, I'm thinking it's around maybe ten people, ten or twelve people who are on, and, and this is the group that uh, I asked for volunteers and we had a really enthusiastic group uh, who volunteered, uh, and I'll let uh, Casey share about herself, but uh, uh, she unfortunately will, will be leaving us this year to uh, do something that's a pretty, pretty exciting in her own right. Um, but she will not be with us next year, but she's been a very integral part of the team for the last uh, last year or two and has some really good perspective. We, we had met uh, on a topic yesterday and just uh, I think she'll have some good contributions for the group.
Um, it's, it's been a, a great year. We only met about um, five times, once a month. Um, but I think we're all leaving with more questions and answers um, around this work, um, and really starting to think about even just kind of um, creating a, a, a mission statement um, for the work, um, is really challenging. And I think one of the biggest questions I have is um, how will the research be done in terms of what methods and what strategies to uh, implement this work? I think right now there have been a lot of models, a lot of researchers, um, a lot of literature has been put forth, um, and a lot of it is controversial in terms of how it's implemented or how it frames the challenges. Um, and so I think a lot of the questions that I'm walking away with are um, how, how will we go about? Or how will the team go about um, implementing this work um, in a way that um, doesn't do more harm, but in a way that it, it really um, does focus on um, solutions. Um, and so really thinking about how it's framed, um, the strategies, I think we even had the discussion of, you know, are we saying um, anti racism? Are we saying racial equity? Um, and that was a huge shift just in thought and how the, the challenge is framed and also how I think the work will be guided. Um, but really thinking of, there's just a whole spectrum of um, you know, philosophies and strategies to tackle this. Um, and, and I think some can, can lead to more harm and some are more open ended. Um, but I think it's also just something kind of in the zeitgeist and something really happening right now. Um, where people are just really feeling mixed about um, how how it's implemented, um, and learning from some of the challenges of how it's been implemented in some places and has worked better than others.
Can you articulate a little bit just so I better understand where the concerns are around how the implementation could potentially do more harm than good?
I think some of, some of the research in terms of, you know, who, who's accountable and only, you know, parts of society being accountable for certain types of work. Uh, thinking through things through a dichotomous lens. Um, that doesn't always match the scenario. Um, so really just kind of thinking um, in, in who, who's been affected by racism and um, who's responsible for it and kind of like how to move the pendulum. Um, specific strategies of who can have a, a voice in certain rooms. Um, and, and kind of like this oppressed and oppressor um, dichotomy, um, and through some of the framework, um, some of it, you know, um, thinking in some of the frameworks and thinking, um, you know, of that it's uh, th- this work is, needs to be done by the, the white community and thinking that many groups, you know, for, for growing up in a, with systemic racism um, have been affected, um, have in many cases, you know, internalized racism, um, in terms of um, different groups, right? Um, we can get into like the oppression Olympics and things like that, but it's not as clear cut as I think just um, one, 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 one group being responsible um, for the damage, one group being responsible for the harm. Um, and another group being victims. I think sometimes it, it puts certain groups in perpetual victim land. Um, without the autonomy, without the, the ability to um, move from that, that place in society. Um, and other groups in oppression, oppressor lands without the ability to move from that. I think sometimes it creates more divisiveness versus really being able to, to move forward. Um, and really creating the society that we want. I think of, you know, sometimes it's like to things where we're having, um, you know, race-based college orientation and things like that, where we're going so far that we're going back towards segregation in some ways. Um, so I think just finding that balance, um, and I think it's hard because I think there's a lot of, of voices out there. Um, but I think sometimes we're creating more divisiveness by um, the classifications. I think we have to find this balance of having these classifications for protection. And groups need to be protected. Um, but I think sometimes that we are um, putting people into these silos. Um, and then again, attributing certain features, certain roles um, based on those classifications. I guess that's the only concern.
My perspective is I felt like that was very well articulated and thank you for sharing that perspective. Um, and you know, I think it will be interesting having your involvement here today as we look at the policy, looking through the lens that you just articulated to see how it might be reflected in the policy. But I think it's also, I could see that applying, you know, Tori, as we put together the actual procedures around this is also applying, you know, that lens that was just articulated.
Yeah, I uh, yeah, I agree. I think this is really gonna come into play a lot once the procedures start getting put in more so than a policy. It's, it's a weird line. Sorry, sorry, Cassie. We, we tried, we tried defining that line last meeting. Um, but it is, it is definitely something for us all to keep in mind as we work on it.
And I, and I'll say that we, you know, we haven't done a ton of work with the the procedures piece, or I guess in the, in the, there's, there's not supposed to be procedures in the policy, but where, where it stood bumps up against that line in, in the policy and under the implementation section. Um, most of the things we did was, was in the, the front matter and the definitions. And I think part of that again is thinking that the district group is pretty well positioned to help think through that a little bit more closely. Um, so that will be interesting. Casey, would you say what you were just articulating? Um, is that like? Is, is that a, a, a view across the group or were you giving us an idea of some of the kind of conversations that have ensued?
Oh, those are some of the conversations that have been raised. I think um, everyone's coming at it from um, very different experiences, which was great because then it fostered these conversations. Um, I think everyone um, really has a passion for this work and I think it's just really trying to find a way um, to do it in, in a safe and steady way so that it doesn't further exacerbate or, or, or do the opposite of what it's trying to achieve. Um, and I think we, we really came up with, you know, we came from very different perspectives and came up with a lot of different ideas. Um, but without consensus of how to move forward because our main focus was, was building the statement.
And so the, 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 it's, it's listed as the proposed racial equity statement. Do you feel or do you have, are you able to comment on whether, do you feel there's consensus among the group on that? On those phrases?
I think at this point we did come to consensus. I think we worked through it and refined it. Um, but a- as you said, it, it should be a living document because I think, you know, for all of us educators, all right, we, we build a summative and then once we have students actually take it, we find ten ways that we want to improve it. And I think this is gonna be the kind of, the same work is like once it actually guides um, different, different um, actions. I think we'll, we'll get a lot of feedback about, you know, things that were unintended consequences for the best and those that, you know, unintentionally created more challenges. So I think we're at a really good starting point and we found consensus, but I think for sure it should be a living document and, and adopted as needed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think it'll really be helpful to, you know, I mean, we have in this proposed policy that Mike needs to report to the board on a quarterly status. So I think reports that frequently will help us kind of adjust as, especially in the first couple of years and then, you know, check in as it goes because there will definitely need some finessing, I'm sure.
Yeah. Um, well, thank you, Casey. I think we can look at the policy in a moment and um, maybe we can see how some of what you were just talking about applies. Um, Mike, when you talk about there's, you know, ten or so members, um, we remind us, there's, there's a couple of people are designated as co-chairs, right?
Right. Sarah Schoolcraft and Meg McDonough are the co-chairs and they both couldn't be here tonight, but they're also both willing to participate and want to help with that.
Okay, so when we're looking at that next layer of work, they're, they're gonna be the, the guiding, the guiding forces.
Right.
Great. Um, and you mentioned kind of, it sounded like multiple um, multiple layers of vetting. And so um, are we right to assume that, that um, you're comfortable with you, the co-chairs and the rest of the group kind of um, putting that together, whether it's from students, whether it's parents, um, community organizations, et cetera?
I think so. And then we can come back to you and have you kind of uh, evaluate what we've done and see if there's more information that you think is necessary and then we can go back and do another round of work based on kind of your observations.
Fantastic. And through that process, like what, do you, do you have an idea of what our role should be or could be? Or are we gonna be kind of hearing from you summarize of what, what transpired?
I think we'll, we'll share that information and then give some feedback because I know the, that some of the people we met with today had, had some questions and some comments in certain areas. I think Casey does as well. Uh, but that would be part of that, that we would give some, some feedback, kind of highlighted areas that there were questions or suggestions on and then uh, let, let you kind of vet that through and uh, decide the next steps, but give you some recommendations.
Okay. And some of them might be like consensus, we have a strong theme across all the groups of this should happen and there might be some other areas that are kind of like, uh, some people think this, some people think that, y'all need to make a call on it.
Right. Not sure about this, or maybe we're, we're missing something in this area.
Yeah. That sounds good to me. Um, process wise, Elizabeth Tori, does that sound? Okay.
Sounds like a good plan.
Cool. Um, well, maybe we can just uh, take a minute then to just make sure that what we're handing over is, is um, you know, our, our best work at the moment. So just turning towards looking at the um, draft policy. Uh, I'll just mention that I think the one thing that's changed since the last meeting is that we added a definition for universal design for learning. Um, and in terms of um, Casey, what you were mentioning about, you know, thinking about what strategies um, actually look like to implement this, you know, the two big umbrella strategies that are called out here are um, are universal design for learning and culturally responsive practices. Um, and so we, we kind of, you know, the, the model policy from the state and, and most every policy you look at includes culturally responsive practices, and that's also in the, the education quality standards draft. Um, so that's, that's very low hanging fruit, but we added in U D L as a, as a complimentary and overlapping strategy, and particularly for um, students with disabilities or, or students with learning differences who not, have not necessarily been identified. Um, so uh, Tori and Elizabeth, any, any thoughts? Like, is this okay as a, as a placeholder for now? We, we pretty much took the language and then, as I mentioned, um, in the informative email, Shannon Leslie helped us with some wording in that first part, which I thought was a great, great suggestion and
Yeah. I, yeah, I definitely, I appreciate these changes and thank you so much for hunting down that um, definition. The only thing is, I, I, I hope you don't mind, I can always put it back under universal design for learning on subsection A. It had provide flexibility in the ways information is presented, in the ways students respond, in the ways how students engage. So I just kind of took out the in the ways repetition. Um, because that was really starting to annoy me as I was reading it. Um, but other than that, I think, I think it's a great, great start. Um, great handing off point, but happy to hear otherwise.
I, I like those changes. Elizabeth?
I'm happy with it as well. Thank you.
Awesome. Um, so maybe this is a good time. Casey, do you, do you have any thoughts on, you know, just thinking strategies and these two umbrella strategies of cultural responsive practices and, and your, your universal design for learning? Do you have like any big reactions or red flags to that at the moment?
Um, I really appreciate both. Uh, the, the one question that um, comes up and um, is what what happens when we have students who have extremely different cultures from the cultures at school, uh, where they are not compatible? So thinking about um, you know, students um, are taught values about um, you know, not having genders, you know, be um, equal or um, respecting um, certain um, sexual orientation identities and things like that. How can we make sure that for the most part, right, we're respecting cultures, but at some point um, the school culture and the, the values of the district trump um, the culture that students are coming with?
Yeah. I think that's a great point to raise. Um, you know, I think most of the language in here is about You know, I think most of the language in here is about honoring identity and backgrounds. And I think we've, we've talked, we've kind of created this new. Catchphrase, if you will, identity, ability and/or background. But.
I really appreciate that language, because I think it's really inclusive.
Good. And, and we tried, you know, we tried not to, to list out different groupings. We try to just use that, and you know, in the implementation section, you'll see that some of that still shows up. And I think, you know, we could, we could clean that up as a group if we wanted to now, or we could. See, see what the, the district team says. But I, I agree that it's, it is a little bit of a conundrum, what happens when identities essentially are kind of. I don't want to say in opposition, but you know, if, if somebody's identity is based on, in part, denying somebody else's identity. That's, that's an issue. So I know what I've seen in, in other policies. Is some sort of language that says something like, you know. Insofar is, you know, everybody's identity should be affirmed insofar as they do not, um, in any way detract from anybody else's. Or something like that. Just to like note, you know, because it could be, somebody could have a, a, you know. A, a strong religious conviction about something as well, that, you know, is actually. Detracting from somebody else's identity. So I think it's, it's all sorts of scenarios that can come up. That we, um, would want to account for, where somebody doesn't just say, well, this is my identity, is like. Yeah.
Can you help me to understand that? Like, can you use that in an example where somebody expressing their identity would take away from someone else? Just so I can better put that in context?
Sure, like if somebody said, you know, hey, I'm taught at home that, you know, um, men are superior to women.
Yeah.
Or that, um, you know, transness is not a legitimate. Thing, you know. Or, you know, you could play that out with race or anything else. Right?
Yeah, um, it's more the what do you, what do you do with that?
What's that?
It's more, and, and just thinking back to what Casey was saying, when you have. These students who are coming in with, you know, these different experiences, right? These different perspectives and values that are being instilled at home or otherwise. And if they come in and they make, I mean, we, we've got anti discriminatory, like, and, and other sort of policies we have. I, I believe we also have other protections, so I'm trying to understand. How we build that into this particular policy.
I think, I think, you know. We, we talk about, you know, respecting them and, and honoring their backgrounds and stuff. But at the same time, the core of it is creating, um, an inclusive, you know, place where everybody feels, you know, belonging and inclusion. Um, and I feel like it is, it is going to have to be a call of, you know, how do you handle in that moment of like, how do you handle? Something that's messing up that inclusion and belonging as a whole. But I. I don't know. How you put that into words and into the policy is the trick.
Thinking about like, how do you react to that, right? You know, I'm saying, you know, without saying. Your family's wrong, right? And, but it, it's more like we as this community in our school are inclusive. And we don't exclude people for blah, 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 versus telling them that where they come from is incorrect. Because in a way, what, what we're saying is we actually respect the culture you come from, even though, you know what I'm saying? It's, it's really tricky.
Yeah, it is. And, you know, some people have called it the paradox of tolerance, right? Like, how do you tolerate intolerance? And it's very tricky. I think generally saying like, this is our shared values in this community.
That's right. When you're here, this is how you are expected to behave and contribute and respect each other, right?
That's right. And, and you're, you know, you're allowed to believe what you want. Um, but certainly the way you behave here, there are certain expectations. And you, you should, you know, you need to be open enough to, you know, thinking about these things. And if not, then we need to like figure something else out for you.
Well, and I think that's what gets tricky. And I think, I think that'll be. Be open to it, and if you're not open to it, then we're going to have to find some other way, you know, so I think that's.
And I, I hate to use this, but I do think that's going to be something that'll come up for, you know, that Mike will have to deal with probably first. Um, and, you know, that'll show up in the quarterly review. How do we handle it? And how do we? Does the policy need tweaking to address it?
Right.
I mean, give me an, an idea on, let's say, an annual basis of how many incidences we're dealing with. Where things are being escalated up, where, you know, let's say students are. Expressing themselves in a way that is not consistent with what we're trying to articulate here. As in, let me just be more forthright, you know, how many incidences in the classrooms where a student is calling out to another student? And making them feel unwelcome? Or not seen or not validated, or, you know?
Well, and I think we, we have, we have policies that address that. We have, eh, eh, even if it doesn't rise to that level, we have other. We have teachers who address that with students, and in most cases, we, we try to err on the side of addressing it. But then using it as a teaching opportunity to help them understand.
Right.
How to do things differently. It doesn't always work that well. There, there, you know, there, there was, there was a situation that Casey and I were talking about yesterday. Where, um, it, it, it involved education, uh, and conversation and people willing to. Uh, have difficult conversations on something and, and help increase awareness and knowledge of, of how to handle that particular situation. So that's, that's the reason why we have a policy and part of the reason why we're doing this work. So that people can feel comfortable and supported and engaging in those tough conversations.
I like the ability to like, in real time, be able to have the conversation about that. And I think I had shared with you all probably two meetings ago with my son in eighth grade. And a very close friend of his making fun of him for his learning disabilities. And the reaction to that, actually, there was a formal investigation that happened. I mean, it really sort of spiraled. And I kind of wanted to put a stop to it. You know, my perspective was this is a learning opportunity, not just for this particular boy. But also for others in the classroom to learn about different learning styles. I, I think wherever possible, we can do that. That's a real opportunity for others to get involved in. Versus pun, you know, punishment, but it sounds like, you know, that, that's the preferred route wherever possible.
Definitely.
But I, I think you have, you know, I think you're, that's, that's a really important insight to recognize that like. What actually gets reported and dealt with in a formal basis is very different than what's happening on a daily basis, right? And certainly like, you know. Students of color that I know that are in high school. You know, many of them will, will tell you, like, it happens all the time. But they don't take it anywhere, because it's not necessarily going to make things better. Always, right? So I'm thinking just like a few years ago, when the, the board was looking at potentially raising the Black Lives Matter flag, for example. And what, um, they heard back from students of color was, yeah, don't do that, please. It's just going to make our lives harder right now. So, you know. I think it's a tough thing to gauge, and I think that's why it's really important to like. Get student voice involved in this policy and educator voice, because like, when it comes to the practical, for practical purposes, as it is. Kind of like trying to say like, okay, we get it, like, there, there is a red line sometimes when somebody's expressing themselves, whether it's, you know, identity. Or just belief system in a way that's harmful, but like, what does that actually look like concretely? Right? And. Trying to draw that line, right? There's some things that are like very clearly crossing that line, right? Like a swastika or a Nazi salute or whatever, but that can get pretty squishy, especially in the political climate that we're in. And so trying to, trying to. You know, I think what, what, what you've all said, that like, the check-ins are going to be important, because wherever that line gets drawn. Um, which I'll, you know, support the educators on, um, it might have to shift depending on how it actually plays out.
Well, and I think an example, uh, we just had at the board meeting with, with the, someone stealing the, the pride flag. And, uh, we, we wanted to make a very clear statement that, uh, we support our students, that, uh, we're not going to hide this fact. We're going to deal with it and we're going to be very open about it, but at the same time, how far do you take that reaction? And that's where the student voice was important and, and there, there were some ideas that, that involved being a little more. Forthright with kind of the response. And, uh, when I had asked the advisor to respond, and part of this was based on a conversation I had with the students last year. Uh, my first year, when, uh, when, when we, uh, when June 1st came in, it came time to raise the flag. I asked the students, did they want to have some kind of, uh, place where we had students gathered? And, and they wanted it to be a very quiet piece, that raising the flag for them was their expression and their, their statement. They didn't want to go beyond that. So that's why I was very careful this year and making sure that anything we did as a reaction was supported by. The students who are there each and every day.
Totally. Casey, do you have any, any thoughts based on the, what we've been kicking around here?
We don't want to put you on the spot, but you're in, you're in the, the trenches every day with our students, so you. So I'm not within a position you are, so your, your position would be valuable to us.
And not at this time, I just think I, I wholeheartedly agree that, uh, student voice is a huge driving force in this.
Great. You, you might notice, Casey, that, um, one of the, one of the changes we made. You know, I think the, it originally said something, you know, the superintendent will figure out how to measure this and report back to the board annually. But we added this language at the end there about, you know, there'll be, uh, I, I think. As a placeholder, it's called the Equity Advisory Team. And so, you know, part of the idea there was that there will be. You know, re, ongoing work and that it'll potentially, you know, the Equity Advisory Team would be a. Uh, you know, a diverse group. It wouldn't be just racial equity. I don't know if you have thoughts on that. Do you, has, has T-FAR thought about like, whether they want to expand their scope? Or do you think there's room for both T-FAR and something that's more generally equity? Or you think that's a, an ongoing conversation?
It's an ongoing conversation. I think a lot of the feedback, um, when we put it out to the entire district was, you know, what about all other issues of equity that need to be addressed? Um, but the thought of the group was, you know, each, each challenge of equity is its own mountain, you know? And that for one group to really focus specifically, um, on addressing one at a time, but absolutely that there's room for. The more the merrier, like the more minds put together and, and, and solving, um, and creating strategies to, to do this work, I think, um, the better. And then also having other groups, um, that can all, you know, everyone come together to, to share, um, collaborate. But then also having their own time to work on these different issues can be really helpful.
Interesting. Yeah, it's, it's just hard when there's, there's only so much, you know, time and energy and people to go around. And many people span, you know, like you, you're, you're involved with T-FAR, and obviously you have, you know, expertise and, and interest, I assume. Around, you know, disability justice and things like that, so. Yeah, the, try and thinking how that's structured, maybe that's part of what. The group can come back with recommendations around too. They're looking at that last piece.
Absolutely.
I'm bummed we're losing you, 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 Casey, your, your expertise and energy. I, I hope you're, I'm sure you're on to do interesting things. Making the world a better place and whatever your next endeavor is, but, and I. So appreciate you coming and spending your time with us tonight and representing T-FAR.
Thank you very much for allowing me to join.
Is there anything else, um, that you saw in the, in the draft policy, Casey, that you think we should address before handing it off? Is, are there any other red flags or big question marks?
Um, just, just a couple of small things, and I apologize, I wasn't at the meeting this afternoon, um, but so I'm not sure if these, these also came up. Um, but there's a couple of places, um, on the first page, under definitions, talking about equity goes beyond formal equality. And then on the second page, um, both equality and equity are used, um, in terms of the definitions of inclusion.
Okay.
And I'm just not sure if that, um, creates confusion.
Yes. Thank you.
In terms of that. Yeah, and then. So, yeah, again, the concern of, you know, how do we really, uh, make things inclusive, but also, you know, keep the safety, um, in terms of, you know, um. Cultural values that, that may not mirror the, the district's values. Um, and then the, the top of the second page, discovering cultivating the unique gifts, talents and interests that every human possesses. Um, just again, it's a semantic piece of, um. Gifts and who, who's gifting. And kind of that passive voice for the word, and I'm just wondering if strengths or, or something else can be, um, used in its place.
I like that. Cool.
I want to make sure to capture that where, uh, all right, looks like a life here and there already, great.
Yeah, I made suggestions on both those things. I, I think strengths instead of gifts is. A great suggestion, and I think we could maybe just take out the equality below and just say.
Agree, yeah.
Committed to supporting personal growth and think I'm respectful in sense of. Yeah, and then just one, I think, um, just instead of educational historical, I was wondering if it was historical, educational and current practices. Um, under definitions in the very beginning. Equity recognizes economic, social, political and, um, historical, educational. Or historical and current educational practices.
Yeah. I like that. That did not make sense, did it? Good. I wonder about, if you look at the very second line of the policy. Where it says, you know, district has committed to creating inclusive education opportunities through UDL and, uh, culturally responsive practices. And then it talks about addressing the impacts of bias, prejudice and discrimination. Do you think that's enough to kind of say like inclusive and. Addressing impacts of bias? Do you think that potentially gets to what you're saying about? Kind of bounding the inclusion to, to recognize that, you know, intolerance will not be tolerated kind of thing.
Right, balance, about how, how do we balance so many different cultural values, um, while protecting the groups that this is designed to protect? I do, I do.
Okay. It sounds like if that's been part of the conversation with, with T-FAR up to this point too, that that will be brought up. Will bring that lens to looking at what we're handing over as well. Is that safe to assume, you think? So if they want some stronger language in there, that'll, that'll be part of that conversation?
I think so. Right, it's, 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 I don't, I, I don't have the words to change it, but it is balancing that how do we be culturally responsive? While also negating, um, prejudice.
Yeah.
When, when, um. You know, schools at some point are places of, um, assimilation.
Yeah.
Into the school values, so, um, for better and for worse, right? There, that's, I think, exactly what this is designed to tackle.
Totally. Um, if you're comfortable for us to kind of put it, make note of that, see what comes back and then. Um, see if the group did something with it, but make sure that we have addressed that by the end.
And then the one, uh, last question, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
The one last question I had, um, asked Dr. Leifeder earlier was, um, disaggregated, um, when he's talking about the data in terms of implementation. Disaggregated by race and ethnicity, and, um, he had shared the federal document that guides this work. And I just was, um, left with more questions about what, what groups and how was it broken down in Vermont? And I just was left with more questions about what, what groups and how was it broken down in Vermont? In terms of when it, the, the federal document that was shared looked like it, it included all of the racial categories and then a few different ethnic groups. And I was just curious about how it was broken down in Vermont. And I just know from in the past, many students, you know, for many different reasons are unaware or uncomfortable sharing some of that information. Or sometimes just don't know for, for very different reasons. Their ethnicity or ethnicities.
Totally. You know, that's, that, that line is one of the, that may be the only place left where it still calls out a bunch of categories. And I know just federal accountability wise, you know, there are certain categories and I think they use the unfortunate terminology of subgroups that you're held accountable for anyway. So I wonder about just rewording that part. To say something more about, you know, using data to look for patterns across groups instead of calling them all out. Because, you know, we, the, the, what was it called? I think the aspirations program? Right? Like that, I mean, that's a fantastic data-driven program and it's, you know, that, that category of first generation is not mentioned here, you know, but we want you to use all the data you got, quantitative and qualitative, to be looking for different patterns. So if, what would people think about? We don't have to do it in real time right now, but I'd be happy to just suggest some, some wording that doesn't limit the categories, but says something more broadly about using data to look at patterns.
I mean, I think you could just say data and where there's a comma, just take out sort of those specifics and it's just individuals who need to inform the district decision-making, right?
We could, yeah, we could do that. Or we could even just throw back in our, our three of, you know, systematically use district-wide data and individual school level data to identify patterns in what are our three?
Including but not limited to even like
Or to identify patterns in bugger and, and identity, ability and background. Or we could just do the easy thing and take it out.
I think just take it out and just say to inform district decision-making is fine.
Mike, do you have thoughts on this?
Not at this time. I think that's, you know, Casey brought up some of the, some of her questions that she had with me. And, and a lot of that is based on kind of what, what we're, we're required to have. So I'm not quite sure how to reflect that in that language. So I'd, I'd have to, I, I think maybe taking some time over the next couple of months to reflect on that and get some input would be good, but I don't have anything right now.
My, my question, Mike, when you collect that data, is it like a, is it a set form or?
We, we collect it. It's part of the registration process and, and we're required to collect. And, you know, and now it's self-reported data, number one, but it's also
Right.
It's self-reported and people don't have to fill it out, but it is, it is information that we have to report back to the Vermont Agency of Education and they have to, they have to report it to the US Department of Education. So there, there's, there's guidelines on, on what has to be asked and, and how.
Right. Yeah. So I'm wondering if we would be better off just leaving it without even saying our three, just in case.
It does change.
I, cause, yeah, cause it changes. And I just, I don't know if you expanded what you're asking, if that would necessarily be allowed. I'm going to guess no. You know, if it's, if it's mandated what you can ask, it'd be, it could be tricky, you know? So it might be easier to just leave it at data.
Yeah. I mean, and I think, you know, that data is pretty limited, right? Like I, I include data to be wide. Right? Like asking, you know, student surveys, like asking kids how they're doing and whether they're they're feeling like school is an inclusive place of belonging. Like I think that's important data as well. So maybe leaving it just at data. If we assume data is going to be assumed to be beyond, is going to include qualitative.
Yeah.
That's the case to say data.
Yeah.
Broad definition. Okay. So we'll, we'll go with what Elizabeth was suggesting on that then.
Yeah.
Keep it simple.
Yes.
Awesome.
Sometimes simple is more inclusive, I think.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and I feel like, you know, that, that last bit around implementation could use some more work, but again, I think the district groups are going to be well positioned for that. And one of our design principles is to be conscious of procedure versus policy. So I think they'll be looking into that. So well, thank you, Casey. Wow. Thank you for like reading it so closely. My goodness. I did not realize you were going to be in there doing, doing the wordsmith thing for us. Huge.
And it's
Thanks for having me.
It's, I would say it's helpful to have somebody with kind of a fresh set of eyes and, and thoughts that that wasn't part of those conversations to kind of edit it and kind of tease out some of the important parts that we may have missed. So thank you, Casey. Thanks for being here.
And good luck to you.
Thank you all. Thank you all for having me. And good luck with this work.
Thank you. Take care.
Take care.
Okay. Well, I think then I would say maybe we should hold off on setting another date and see. Mike, you can give us an update on what happened over the summer and how you're doing and that looking towards mid September thing. When the board reconvenes and whenever that is, when is it? End of August?
End of August. It's August 28th.
Okay. Yeah. You can give us a little update then and we can set a date sometime soon after that, maybe on and off Wednesday.
And I should have mentioned again that I, I was taking notes for the meeting. So we have that covered.
Thank you so much.
Hey, question is retreat next Wednesday. It's Wednesday, right? Or is it Friday?
It's Wednesday at the Mad River Barn.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, boy. Okay. It's really on the summer, my friends.
Yes.
Of course, Tori. Thank you for joining from the car, Tori, and from wherever you are in the world, whatever fabulous locality.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm in Chittenden. I needed to actually paddleboard the reservoir for work and I thought I was going to be done soon. Thanks for putting up with my sporadic attendance locations.
Duty calls. I mean, honestly, like if you blurred your background, I would think you were like in your office, like on full focus mode. Cause you're always on point wherever you're coming, calling in from. So I really appreciate everybody's work on the committee so far. Thank you.
That was a positive response. And, and I think again, Casey did a great job, but it didn't seem like she found anything like glaringly obvious that we missed. So I'm taking that as a positive as well.
And she clearly gave it a really deep read and is
I liked it. Yeah.
I agree. Good sign. Can't wait to get here, hear from other educators and students and see what happens with it. Appreciate you all. I'll see, we'll see you till the next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Sounds good.
Good night.
Thanks a lot. Thanks again, Mike.
Everyone.